Today is Tuesday, February 27th. It is nine o'clock. And our first order of business, our Commissioner Bill Pickens will do our invocation. And our pledge of allegiance will be led by Commissioner Paul Adamsack. Please rise if you're able to do so.
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day and all the wonders in it, Father God. Father God, we just thank you for the opportunity to gather here as commission and staff and citizens, Father God. Father God, just guide us in the presentations that were received today. Guide us in our decisions for the best interests of all of citizens of Putnam County. We ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Pickens and Commissioner Adamsack. Next on our agenda is our approval of minutes. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of Board of County Commissioner regular meeting minutes, January 23rd, 2024.
Proper motion, proper second. Any further discussion on the motion hearing? None at all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, the ayes have it. And next order is our other minutes.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the Board of County Commissioner Executive Session Meeting, January 23rd, 2024.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Proper motion, proper second. Any further discussion? Hearing none at all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose like sign, the ayes have it. All right, now we're going to go into presentations. And our first presentation will be Lori Parker and Julianne, I believe you're up. And we're going to honor somebody that we all love very dearly. So, but we like the baby better, but.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This next presentation is for Kevin Stevens. He is a Parks and Recreation Manager. And he has been with the county for 18 years. He's been here a long time and has done a lot of programs and brought programs to the county. And Julianne's going to go into that further. If Kevin can come up with his family and baby.
Bring the whole family up.
That's right.
Jeanette, good deal.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. This is not on your agenda because Kevin dropped this bomb on me unexpectedly. And so after we took a minute to catch my breath, we certainly didn't want to let the opportunity go by without honoring him. Kevin spent 18 years in Parks and Recs with Putnam County and has done the yeoman's work in that division. He has seen Parks and Recs in times where we had no funding, where we have a little funding. He was with us through COVID when we couldn't be Parks and Recs. And then coming out of COVID when it was such a challenge to get those kids back engaged into something. And through Kevin's steady leadership and dedication, many, many nights after five o'clock and many, many mornings before eight-thirty. From everything from facilities to programs in all realms of our county, working with user groups to utilize our fields and our facilities and our children and senior citizen centers and making sure that we have programmatic options for all ages and all interests. Kevin's just done a great job and will be a huge hole that we will be missing. So, we would like to take this opportunity to honor him for those 18 years of service.
Kevin, why don't you introduce your family?
Yes, sir, absolutely. You know I don't miss a moment to use a microphone. My wife, Jeanette, and my son Caleb, and of course, our little girl Ava Marie, who is the feisty one here. Thank you, Julianne and Lori. A big thanks to the Commissioners, the Board of County Commissioners, has always been very supportive of Parks and Rec and always tried to help us out whenever we needed something. And of course, the administrative staff, Administrator Mr. Suggs, Matt, when he was here, of course, Julianne and JR have just been great to work with. And, you know, sometimes I needed some extra direction and sometimes I needed, you know, some finessing with certain things. But it has been just an absolute honor and privilege to be here for this amount of time. I absolutely love the citizens of Putnam County. And like I told many of you, it's a hard choice for me to make because it's a decision dealing with some family issues that I'm going to be working on up in South Georgia when we leave. So, I didn't even want to leave the job because I just, I absolutely love what I do. So, but thank you, thank you from the bottom of my heart. My family thanks you, even if she has to take her outside because she's not going to be very quiet.
It's okay.
My son, everyone. So, thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Kevin. Hang on a minute. Mr. Adamsack.
Yeah, I just wanted, Kevin, to thank you as both a veteran of the Army as well as your service here. I mean, your life has been a life of service and I really appreciate it. I appreciate every interaction that we had. Every time I ever asked anything of you or wanted questions answered, even if it wasn't the answer I wanted to hear, you gave it to me very quickly, made sure that it covered all bases, made sure if you had escalated to your management to give verification that it was the right answer, the right path for us. It's just, it's been a great experience working with you. I really appreciate it. And I wish you all the best with your family and everything else that you got in your future endeavors. And like I've told you several times, if you ever do decide to come back to in the workforce, whether it's in Georgia or in Florida, you can use me as a reference whenever you want.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Pickens.
Yeah, Kevin, it's truly been an honor for me to work with you as a Commissioner, but also Chair of the Parks and Recs Committee for, what, the last six years? When I took that task over, Angie Wisnott was our Director of Recreation. And then when she left, you wonder who is going to replace Angie because Angie did a good job. And you stepped right in with the qualifications that you had. But one thing you had, you had passion, were passion to make our programs better. And you've done that. And truly wish you and your family the best and you will truly be missed. I am sure that Julianne will keep your cell phone number because I'm sure we're going to have to ask you some questions as we move forward. But good luck in your next endeavor. Thank you.
Commissioner Wilkinson.
Kevin, thank you for your 18 years of service here at the county. I've only got to work with you a year and a half since I've been elected. But in the short time that I've worked with you, you've done an outstanding job. You're definitely passionate. Thank you, Commissioner Pickens, for noticing that you're passionate about our community and getting people out and doing outdoor activities. And for that, I'm thankful. And thanks for your leadership in our Waterways and Trails meeting. I know they're not always the easiest of meetings and you've always been steadfast and had the greatest demeanor. And I really, really appreciate everything you've done. Thank you.
Mr. Suggs.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One other thing that's lost here this morning with Kevin, and Kevin, I'm going to do my best to get through this, is Kevin's had two jobs in his entire career. He retired from the military, 20-plus years of service. Thank you for that, Kevin. 18 years of service right here in Putnam County for the citizens of Putnam County. Thank you, Kevin. What Kevin's entering into now is probably the most honorable job that he'll ever have, which is taking care of family. And I can relate to that, Kevin, as you and I had talked. And so, from your county administrator and your friend, I wish you nothing but great success moving forward. And I know you'll do the honorable thing because you always have. Thank you, and we'll miss you, buddy.
And Kevin, let me close it up by saying I agree with everybody, what everybody said. But I think Mr. Suggs hit the nail on the head. I moved down to take care of my mother-in-law. It wasn't, it's a beautiful piece of property, but it's a lot to take care of. And you didn't leave here because you're mad, or you didn't leave here because the job is taunting. You left, you're leaving because you want to take care of family. And what better calling, what higher calling can there be than for us to do that? Kevin, it's been an honor to serve with you, to work with you. I was the Parks and Recs Chairman before Commissioner Pickens. You've always been there. You've always answered. And again, like Commissioner Adamsack said, you didn't give me the answer I wanted sometimes. That's okay. I need the truth. And, but we've been able to see a lot of good things done in the Parks and Recreation throughout this whole county. And for that, I'll be ever indebted to you. And if you ever need me, you've got my personal cell phone number. So, thank you from the bottom of my heart, okay?
I was looking for my wife.
Let's get a picture. Why don't we stand up here? And just because you moved to Georgia, it's still Go Gators, by the way. Not, okay, all right, good. All right, our next presentation will be Commissioner Leota Wilkinson is going to do the proclamation for the American Red Cross. So, if y'all would come down. And she will meet you at the.
Good morning. Thank you for being here today.
And thank y'all for coming today. We greatly appreciate it.
Putnam County Proclamation Number 2024-014, National Red Cross Month. Whereas, the American Red Cross is a humanitarian organization founded in 1881 and originally chartered by Congress as a federal instrumentally in 1900, but receives no federal funding. And whereas, the American Red Cross prevents and alleviates human suffering in the face of emergencies by mobilizing the power of volunteers and the generosity of donors. And whereas, the American Red Cross responds to more than 65,000 disasters annually and delivers vital services to members of the armed forces, their families, and veterans at home and overseas, and provides lifesaving health and safety training to more than 5 million people in 2023. And whereas, March is recognized as Red Cross Month across the nation. And 2024 marks the 143rd anniversary of the American Red Cross and the 110th anniversary of Florida's first chartered Red Cross chapter established here in northeast Florida in March of 1914. And whereas, the American Red Cross has repeatedly answered the call to respond to emergencies in northeast Florida, beginning with the yellow fever epidemic of 1888, including support to American troops during the Spanish-American War and the Great Jacksonville Fire in 1901. And whereas, the American, I'm sorry, the northeast Florida chapter of the American Red Cross provides its humanitarian services across 13 counties in northeast Florida and is the headquarters for the 35-county Red Cross North Florida region stretching from the first coast across the entire breadth of the Florida Panhandle. And whereas, the Florida, North Florida region and northeast Florida chapter of the American Red Cross in 2023 helped more than 1,200 families affected by home fires or other disasters, including 28 families here in Putnam County, Florida. And whereas, the North Florida Red Cross region provided 13,000 vital services to military members, veterans, and families, and deployed more than 200 of its 1,000 volunteers in response to hurricanes and other disasters in Florida and nationally. And whereas, American Red Cross disaster aid is free, and 90 cents of every dollar donated goes directly to mission service delivery. And now, therefore be it resolved by the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners that we recognize March as National Red Cross Month, the 143rd anniversary of the American Red Cross, and the 110th anniversary of the northeast Florida chapter of the American Red Cross, and commend the volunteers and paid staff of the North Florida region for their continuing humanitarian service to Putnam County and to the state of Florida. Mr. Chair, I move approval of Proclamation Number 2024-014, National Red Cross Month in Putnam County, Florida.
Second.
Second. Proper motion, proper second. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none at all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose like sign, the ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Somebody want to speak?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners, first, thank you very much for hosting us here this morning for this proclamation. But I'd like to introduce the people with me. We have been here before, but never with a crowd like this. And I'm very proud to go down the line, well, I'm going to do this in reverse order because we have a special person to recognize. First, Felicia Stalder, who is an outstanding volunteer for us in Commissioner Pickens District. I'll point that out. Then Cynthia McGuire and her son Chuck McGuire, also District One. And then we have Liz DeSassino, who is the Regional Director for our Services of the Armed Forces Program that does such amazing things, what brought me into Red Cross from my military background, 20 years of experience. Gary Pelletier, who is the Senior Disaster Program Manager for the entire region, but at the moment, he also is responsible for several counties within northeast Florida, including Putnam County. And then we have Joel Walker, who is relatively new, eight, nine months into the job, as the Regional Volunteer Services Officer. And he's a special person because he is a Putnam County and Palatka home guy. This is, this is his home turf. So, we're delighted and I'd really like to turn it over to Joel to have a few words for you. Thank you.
Joe, you can bring that microphone right up to you.
Okay. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Thank you once again for acknowledging the American Red Cross on this beautiful day. As Skip said, we have been around for a long time. In Jacksonville, 1914 was that start date. But one of the things I want to just bring up briefly, 90% of the work that Red Cross does across this great country are done by volunteers. In Putnam County alone, you heard that we have serviced 28 families. In those 28 families, 95 individuals were serviced in this county, which is great work that we are doing, but we need more. We need more volunteers. So, one of the missions that I have, especially being a graduate of Palatka High of Class of 89, is to really come back into this community in Putnam County, Palatka, Interlock, and all of the smaller towns and find those volunteer opportunities for our citizens here in Putnam County. It's a lot that needs to be done. We have a great team that's doing work already in the county, but we are looking for more. So, just wanted to say thank you. And on behalf of our Regional Executive Director, Ms. Kristen Smith, want to say thank you again.
Thank you.
Graduating of 79.
All right, three, two, one. Don't move yet. Three, two, one.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to our Chamber of Commerce Economic Development Update. Mark and Dana, if you'll come up. I think you have something special to share with us today.
Ms. Dana will have something special. She's the glitz and I'm just the numbers. It's a pleasure to be here. Good morning, Commissioners. Just wanted to give a brief update on where things stand with economic development here in Putnam County. Currently, we're working, or I'm working on 14 total projects that are, would be in what I call the pipeline. Four of those are the confidential leads that we receive from Florida Commerce and Jack's USA, our utility partners, et cetera. 10 of the projects of the 14 have come to us organically. Either they've seen our website, they've seen our marketing, our ads in economic development trade publications, social media, they've come to us organically. Couple of projects I'll address because there's some timelines involved. Project Owl, which the Port Authority and the Development Authority have letters of intent with on about 140 total acres. Those are coming up here in March and April for, that will expire. Hopefully, they'll move forward and do a purchase-sale agreement and we'll be on our way. Project Polly, which is probably new to some of you, you haven't heard. We've been working with the Development Authority and Chairman Reynolds and through Dana. It is an HDPE plastics PVC plant, would be about 80 jobs. And there, they have an LOI with the Development Authority on 27 acres on the north side of the Bargeport area or Port Putnam. From a marketing standpoint, we have taken out either half or full page ad placements in Business Facilities Magazine in November, December, and January, February issues, and also a full-page ad in Site Selection Magazine in November, December. And finally, our capital campaign, fundraising campaign to increase funding for economic development began in January. We launched it then. We're kind of in the quiet phase right now, putting the building blocks together to get out there publicly and start trying to get investment from the private sector. We'll mention that next Wednesday, March 6th, our Putnam County Economic Development Council Quarterly Investors Luncheon will be at Ravine Gardens, starts at 11:30 to 1:00. If you can make it, please send me an email. Right now, we have about 50 people registered. So, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to answer those.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation, Mark.
You're welcome. I'll introduce Dana Jones, our President and CEO.
Good. Ms. Dana?
Thank you, and good morning. It's a pleasure to be here and to horn in on Mark's economic development time, just to make a few comments about tourism. As y'all know, the Chamber administers the Tourist Development Council and the Tourism Program on your behalf. It's funded through bed tax dollars, which is paid by visitors, not residents, which I always love to say before I make some comment, like, since October, we've spent $120,000 in grants for over 30 different events that happen in Putnam County. Everything from golf tournaments to basketball, boxing, y'all are aware of most of them. I put the top four that we've recently marketed at Rule Days, at Your Place. I ran out of cards for y'all, I'm sorry. It's festival time, and don't forget, it's also the Putnam County Fair and Bostwick Blueberry, which is not on the card, is April 27th. You know, this is a great time for Putnam County. We have more visitors in the first four months of the year than any other time. I'd be remiss if I didn't try and urge businesses and residents to kind of clean up and let's look good for all these people while I'm here and have a microphone. As y'all know, in April, we'll host Bass Elite again, and I'm sure y'all understand that economic impact. I've been preaching it too many years to waste any time this morning. But they will be here in April, and you will get more notifications of the different events coming as we get closer. As y'all know, we consistently have been running our events on Facebook, Instagram, and on our app that I encourage everybody to download, VisitPutnamFL. It's a great resource, too, for residents, you know, all of our local restaurants around here. If you're looking for a new dentist, you can find one on here. Oops. Anything you need on this app, so please use it, download it, and encourage others to do that. We are also scheduled to do a show called Take It Outside, which will air on the Discovery Channel sometime in 2024. I will definitely get y'all the air dates when we receive them. They had to postpone their filming for February due to weather, so I think they'll be doing it in March, so it'll probably run later in the fall. I also wanted to show you, what Larry has alluded to, our two latest videos for TV commercial, one of which will air in April on Fox Sports during our live airing of The Bass Elite. So, I believe Ashley is going to come cue that up for me, so I don't mess anything up.
And while she's doing that, I do want to mention, again, if you don't have the Visit Putnam app on your phone. Putnam app on your phone, you know, if you look at Facebook and people go, there's nothing to do in Putnam County, pull this app up, and you'd be surprised at all the things that are going on in Putnam County. There's not a weekend goes by, there's not something to do here.
They're short.
Putnam County, Florida's best-kept secret. Get out and have fun. Visit the real Florida, Putnam County.
I love the butterfly. It's really cool.
Get out and have fun. Visit the real Florida, Putnam County.
I think we know that guy.
I was going to add that you might notice some of our highly-priced models
Yes.
are in the audience today.
There was no compensation for that, right?
No, sir. We do use local models all the time, because when they provide them, it is at a cost. So we appreciate him and his family and all the others in it, too. I just wanted to also note that these commercials are geared with research. You know, the one you saw, for instance, is to attract the younger crowd, because research shows they are the ones spending money right now, the 20 and 30-year-olds. Research shows they're foodies. Research shows they want to be outdoors at music and having fun. So you kind of get the gist of why we do what we do and why it looks like it looks. Also, I want to thank you, the tremendous growth in tourism would not be possible without everybody doing their part. Y'all have certainly done yours, and we appreciate you. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Adams, Zach, you had a question?
So Dana, it's just, I'm going to take some time with you outside of this, but just something I think we need to start thinking about from a tourist development, just on St. John's Ass particularly, is we have a couple of new restaurants, obviously the Volchkovs, and then with the cafe reopening, but unfortunately, they're open for dinner in their new reopening. But is there a way we could start marketing, like maybe targeted to like the villages and things like that? Is, I love antiquing, my kids like old stuff, so we go to all the shops downtown on a regular basis. We do a loop probably once a month, right? And almost everyone that we meet when we're in those shops is not from Putnam County. Everyone's from Middleburg, from Daytona, from Armin. I mean, literally, just last weekend, I met 18 people, I think, and not one of them was a local person, except for the people that were physically running the shops. Maybe it's something we can start, because there is tours that go to different places from like the villages and different things. Maybe start approaching them about the possibility of bringing in a group of people, then they could stay overnight, do the restaurants, do antiquing, you know, and then some thrift stuff, too, obviously. Just maybe some, I'd like to get some time with you to talk through that.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that. We do a little geo-fencing around the villages areas for our marketing. You know, a lot of people say, I don't see what y'all do, what do you do? Well, the problem is, we only market out of county. So the villages and South Florida, and then obviously Georgia, Alabama, places like that. We usually do 600-mile drive distances, our little radius of marketing.
Yeah, and even the cross-
But we have included them, because we have talked to them before about their bus-
And even the Cedar Key community, that type, we go there, there's no reason they can't come here, and I know there's, some of them do come here, so we need to have a little bit of a trade-off there, so maybe we need to start thinking about that, from that perspective, because there's a lot of people in that community that are into the arts and into that stuff. And we also need to do a better job of leveraging the college and the arts department. I mean, that's, that's something in these advertisements we do, which are great, we don't really leverage that usually, and that's, that is a draw that could get people here, and could also increase the amount of arts activity that we have here, seeing as we have the Florida School of Arts right here in our backyard. So just some things, and I just want to say it out loud here, so I head in my head and remember to reach out to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dana, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Dana.
Thanks.
Okay, moving on to our next presentation, Ms. Lori Parker. A very important man in Putnam County.
Well, first, if Leo and all those fans could come up here, please.
Yeah, come on up.
Come on up. We received nominations for Employee of the Month, and the nominee for Employee of the Month for January is Leo Waitson. He's the Building Official for Planning and Development, and Leo's been here 29 years. So he's been here a long time, but Brian can touch on some of the things. Where Brian go? Oh, hey. Well, anyway, he does get this plaque and $100 check
Good deal.
for being Employee of the Month for January 29th.
Yay, Leo.
So I told Leo he's going to have to have a speech after this. He's like, "Speech?" I was like, "You get a check, too?" He said, "Check." I'm like, "Yeah, you got all kinds of stuff." But for myself coming in, Leo has been an incredible asset to this county for some time, and really, when I came in, I really just stayed out of his way and said, "What do you need to be successful?" And I think he has done that. We have a full staff. We get things done very, very efficiently. I couldn't speak more highly of them, and it comes, comes from Leo. He, one thing he does very, very well, he self-analyzes everything he does. So something comes through and it doesn't, it gets hung up, and he's like, "Well, how can we do this better? How can we make this better?" And he's always doing that, self-examining, and I think that's where he have his, he has his true power and his remarkable way of controlling F. He can find facts and find everything in his brain that's in there. He can say Article 7, verse blah, 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 Type A, and it's just in there. It's amazing what he can do. I couldn't be more proud of Leo and what he has done with the Building Department, and it's been my honor to work with him.
Come on, Leo, you can do it.
Well, I do want to say I appreciate the opportunity that Putnam County has afforded me, has taken care of myself and my family for 29 years, and it's been a good 29 years. You know, so when I took the job, I gained my mandatory 25 extra pounds, and we've been going hard and fast ever since then. Appreciate this commission, but no man is an island. I have a great staff here with me. Everybody does their job very well. We're busy. Often, when I hire somebody, the first thing I tell them in the interview is, "This is a working building department. There's no room for anybody to slack off. We're all busy, and we work hard for you."
Good, thank you, Leo.
Thank you.
Want to bring everybody up? Come on, don't be scared. Everybody in? You wouldn't know, your call's an issue.
All right, three, two, one.
Leo, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Valerie, have a good day. She is. I've known her her whole life. All right, go take care of building problems, okay? Our next recognition is going to be pulled. The gentleman's not here today, so we'll go right into our Planning and Development Public Hearing. Zach? Kind of got replaced from being the man of the hour, didn't you? Just a little bit.
Good morning, everybody. For the record, Jennifer, Planning and Development Services. The first case we're hearing is PUD 23-00009. The application is to amend the county zoning map from agricultural to planned unit development. The applicant is Carl and Marilyn Bim. The property is located at 184 Clear Lake Road in Crescent City. The subject parcel is approximately 35.08 acres. Future land use is agricultural. Zoning is agricultural to planned unit development, and the proposal is to amend the zoning map to establish an RV park. The applicant is seeking approval for the purpose of an RV park consisting of 13 RV sites, three of which will be used by staff while working, 20 sites for tents and pop-up campers, equestrian uses including riding and short-term boarding, events such as weddings, reunions, and retreats, and a bathhouse. The applicant is proposing development as a single phase with a completion no later than December 31st, 2030. The parcel has approximately 1,000 feet of frontage on Clear Lake Road in unpaved county-maintained right-of-way. The parcel is currently vacant with one storage building and greenbelted. Aerial view. Surrounding zoning. Future land use. Now, this is kind of hard to see. This is what the applicant submitted for his plan. The agricultural future land use category allows activity and resource-based recreational uses and rural recreational uses, so long as no more than 10% of the land area in the distinct agriculture future land use area is used for similar uses. The uses occupy the agricultural future land use category in this portion of the county include residential, general agricultural, and commercial agricultural related. Staff is not aware of any recreational uses located within the general vicinity of the proposed development. The proposed resource-based recreational use and overnight recreation facility are both listed as permissible in the subject zoning district with an approved special use permit. However, LDC Section 45-152 states in part, "Where there is conflict or inconsistency with more stringent requirements shall apply unless alternative restrictions are approved within the PUD ordinance." Since LDC Section 45-196B1 requires all new overnight recreational parks to be governed by a planned unit development, the applicant is required to pursue this request in order to establish the proposed use. The surrounding uses are a mixture of vacant land, single-family residential, and bona fide farm operations. All areas around the subject property are zoned agricultural with an agricultural future land use designation. LDC Section 45-19610A requires all internal streets and driveways to be paved in accordance with the specifications as set forth of the Land Development Code. The road access in the property is an unpaved county-maintained road, and the LOS is undetermined, making it difficult to assess what improvements are required and when those improvements will be necessary. It was suggested that the applicants provide some type of maintenance agreement with the county, however, the applicants did not provide any type of maintenance agreements binding their responsibility to maintain a road, which is subject to deterioration based on the proposed use. The development agreement for the associated request is inconsistent with requirements and references to the Putnam County Land Development Code and Comprehensive Plan without justification or context, indicating waivers from such requirements and regulations. Based on these findings, staff recommends denial of the request to amend the zoning map from agricultural to planned unit development because the proposed use is accessed by an unpaved local road without right-of-way maintenance agreements and fails to adhere to LDC Section 45-223C6, which prohibits PUDs from locating in agricultural land use areas unless the proposal is consistent with the surrounding uses. The Planning Commission voted 5 to 2 to recommend denial of the rezoning application at the scheduled public hearing on December 13th, 2023. Questions?
Any questions for Jennifer? I do. I'll start it off. I see that the road is the big problem here. Is there any other access to this property without using that private road?
There is not.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? All right, seeing none, thank you. We'll go out to public comment now. Do we have anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this application? And anybody opposed to this application? Please come up and state your name. We will give you a three-minute time clock. If you run over it, no trap door will get you, you'll be fine, and we'll allow this to-
My name's Tom Lindeman. I'm at 176 Clear Lake, and I actually share a property line with this property. And number one, there is no similar uses, I think, which is one of the requirements. It's all agricultural. There's no PUDs anywhere around us. We're all a farming community, one dirt road, dead end, where dogs sleep in the road. I mean, that's what we have there. And if this changes to a PUD, RV park aside, just forget about the RV park. If it's a PUD, he can come in here, make an amendment, because he got some investor, and put in a methadone clinic storefront-
Would you move that microphone up to you? Bring that microphone up to you. There you go.
Yeah, in the future, if this RV thing doesn't work out, or he has an investor with a bigger, brighter idea, to put in a methadone clinic, a storefront, a pawn shop. I mean, we're just an agriculture farm home road. That's it. And plus, one of the requirements, I think, was to have similar land use, similar uses, and there's nothing similar to this, what he's proposing. There's no PUDs nowhere. It's all agricultural. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you. It kind of got out of order, I appreciate it. Is the applicant here and would like to speak? Okay, I should have done that first, and I do apologize, so, but we'll let you have the floor, okay? If you will state your name and address for the record, please.
Marilyn Bim, 400 Crescent Lecture Drive, Crescent City, Florida. Good morning, everyone. So there were three things, I think, that was important that Ms. Giselle mentioned, which is the internal driveway, which we, I had reiterated before with the Planning and Division, that in their staff analysis, that there was no waiver in the application for that, which there is. And I have that in a four-page paper by the Planning and Commission. Now, the other one is the maintenance agreement on the road, which is, by the way, is a public road, with the reason why we don't want to, because so many people who have houses there, but it's not their primary residence, they come up there every weekend, they run their ATBs up and down the road and damage the road themselves. So if our business will be blamed for that, the county will be after us. That's the problem, because in the first place, they don't want us to start there, so there's very likely sabotage of that road. And for the unpaid county road now, I know that there is a confusion between commercial and where it is a requirement for us to have a paved frontage if it is a commercial, whereas the definition of commercial, in a way, we are commercial in a different way, because we are proposing a business and we intend to make profit, but this kind of commercial means that we have to register with the city and state, and we have to obtain every permit required to run a business in the state of Florida. But with the Putnam County Land Development Code, our application for PUD is governed by these different sections under the agricultural. I'm sorry, I have to give you the same papers that you know very well, like the back of your hands, but it will make it easier for me to explain- your hands, but it will make it easier for me to explain to you that in this agricultural setting and with the written rules of the Putnam County Land Development Code, there are different sections. So, section forty-five deals with agriculture, and section forty-five dash fifty-nine deals with commercial agriculture, which is directly related to activities when it comes to agriculture, which is like feed store, livestock auction, sow meal. We don't propose that.
Ms. Bem, if you could bring it in for a landing, we'd appreciate it, okay?
Yeah. We propose for section forty-five dash sixty, which is recreational-based, and our application is totally based on what nature has to offer in that piece of real estate. And so, there is that conflict between commercial and the other kind of commercial and the land development code agricultural commercial, which we don't apply for.
All right. We really need to wrap it up, though.
Okay. And so, I want to make... Sorry. So, I think those are the three issues, that the reason why they cannot approve us, the paved driveway or roadway.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. All right, is there any? I've already asked people who want to speak in favor. Is there anybody else that wants to speak against this application? Okay, seeing none, we're going to close up. You got... Hurry, come on. You can come up.
I'll be close up. I'm here.
You need to come up to the microphone and state your name.
James Dean, one-seven-eight Clear Lake Road, Crescent City.
Mr. Dean, thank you.
And my property adjoins the proposed PUD campground, and we are completely against it, and all the neighbors are all completely against it. And we have a lot of the neighbors here, and I think they all want to come up and let you know, or at least just raise their hand, show you that they're against this proposed. So, and the primary, our primary issue is with the road. This last little bit of rain we had, we could barely get in and out of the road. We were spinning, you know, pretty much the whole way in the mud. And it gets muddy from the clay when it rains, so it's just, all the curves, it's just a danger. And I know y'all are, I appreciate y'all's service, and I know you're going to look out for the safety and protection of the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. All right, let the record show, we had about eight people that raised their hand. Is there anybody else that would like to speak against? Please come up. You can go ahead and start making your way up and stand in line if you'd like to do And again, if you'll state your name and address for the record.
A little squeakily, I'm not used to this. My name is Marilyn Mar Scott, and I live at one-seven-one Clear Lake Road. I want to say that our Clear Lake Road is a sugar sand road, and cars get stuck in it all the time and have to be pulled out. And so, that in itself is a detriment to it. The two roads in, there's one road in, and that's Bird Avenue, and Clear Lake Road, they are, excuse me. They are not, they're not prone to having all these cars on them. And we're about to go into a la niña, and la niña brings dry weather, and it's going to mean more. So, in other words, when there's a dead-end road in, both Clear Lake and a Bird Road are dead-end roads. So, all the population has to come out over a railroad track. And with a la niña, we have a possibility of fires, and nobody's going to be able to get out. You're going to increase the... The population has increased in the last two years more than in the twenty years before that, when we moved up from South Florida. And it just is a beautiful area. It's old Florida, and it's magnificent, and we all are friendly. Oops, I almost destroyed your microscope. I'm sorry.
Keep it up there.
No. Anyway, we're all very upset about this, because this is where we live. This is where we, you know, are sending all this energy out of beautiful love and life, sandhill cranes, even with the bear that comes out. And we have a grape vineyard there, and the bear once got drunk, and we found his impression in the sand. And everyone from after that wanted to, before they would kill what they thought was a rabid animal, they'd have to call up and see if it was, if it had had too many grapes. So, it's just that this would ruin the entire neighborhood for so many people, and it's just not a good thing. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Adams, Zach, you had a comment?
A question for staff, I guess. Is, I didn't really think about it, I guess, from reading it, but in the, it says it's allowed use for some recreational overnight with a special use permit. Why does this person have to go through a PUD? I'm just, I don't know why I didn't think to ask that, but it was...
Thank you for the question. Our land development code stipulates, because it's such an immense document with several different regulations, that when you have two regulations in which there's a confliction behind what the allowances are, you have to follow the more stringent. So, our land development code states that a special use permit is a possible avenue. However, another section of our code, where we have the supplemental standards for overnight recreation parks, it requires that they go through a planning and development.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Just welcome.
So, one of the concerns I had has to do with the three, the three RV sites to be occupied for employees. Do, has the applicant stated that they would only be there ninety days as the requirement, or they're saying they would permanently be there?
Well, within the development agreement, it was permanent setups for the employees. But I do believe, at the first public hearing, they kind of clarified on what they would intend to use those three spots for. I don't know if you want to give them the opportunity to further deliberate.
Yeah, I would like that.
Those three spots are just for employees to rest, and it's not for the residents. We are not going to allow that. If three spots is a lot, then we can actually decrease it to one or two. I mean, as long as there is a place to rest during the heat or the cold, so, because people can't just be out there working for twelve hours without rest, at least in an air-conditioned area.
So, do you have a work camp? I mean, when you say working, are you, what do you...
Those are for the workers, yeah. And for us, too, if we have to stay there, if we are there.
Okay. All right.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else against? Please come up.
Mr. Chair, just while he's coming up. If I could just ask, can we have staff clarify? Because the applicant made a comment that this is a public road, and just to clear up any inconsistency.
Okay.
Yes, so this is a public county-maintained right-of-way that is unpaved.
Okay, but our paper says a private, unpaved.
Does that, is that true? I don't have the staff report in front of me.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I thought Jenny said that it was a private road as well, and that was part of the reason why we were looking for a maintenance agreement.
Hang on just a minute, sir. We'll get right to you. Zach, it's on page twenty-five of my...
So, under, so it's page seven of twelve of my staff report, and I don't have y'all's complete report, but under the roadway and traffic circulation section of the staff report, it states, "The subject parcel has approximately one thousand feet of frontage on Clear Lake Road, an unpaved county-maintained road." It's a county-maintained road.
All right. So, you can't drive your four-wheelers on it anyway, can you?
Legally.
Not that I know of.
You're not supposed to.
Exactly. All right, sir. You have the floor. I'm sorry.
Thank you. My name is Leyland Williams, one-nine-five, Clear Lake Road. I live across the street from this PUD. I spoke for my full three minutes for two meetings. The road conditions are well-presented, have been well-presented and represented. The thing I want to impress, this single-access county-maintained dirt road, subject to all the deteriorations, as it's already been highlighted, is not only agricultural use or farmland, this is families, retirees, and people that need all of the other benefits of quality access. Emergency services, you name it. This business deteriorating that road can jeopardize their access. It's a single-access dirt road. It's wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. No, 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 we're not going to do that. Is there anybody else that would like to speak against? All right, we're going to close the public hearing part, and Commissioners, Commissioner Adams, Zach, you have your light on.
Yeah, I guess I have one more question for staff. So, in theory, if someone wanted to put an RV park on a dirt road, and they decided they would pave the road out to the next paved road, that would clear up the issue, correct? Is that, is that what I'm hearing, that the main...
Well, it would certainly be an attribute that we would further explore and utilize with the criteria of approving a PUD. It's not a guarantee.
Because, I mean, there's developers and people that do businesses that do that regularly throughout the state of Florida.
Yes, sir.
This business obviously may not be big enough to do that, but then this may not be a good location for it in that case. But, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioners, any more deliberations? All right, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, all decisions are tough, and this one's tough for me, but I have really don't see this fitting in this particular area. The dirt road is definitely a problem. I rode down that road less than a month ago, and it wasn't bad as everybody says it is. But I'm sure it does get bad when we don't have the rain, and the moisture gets out of the road. It becomes sugar sand, because I had a place at the very end of this road for over fifteen The concern I have is the road and one entrance and one exit, and it's well over a mile. Also, the consistency of the surrounding land uses are not consistent with this particular application. Like I said, any of these decisions are tough for a county commissioner. It just adds to it, since you've known the applicant for over fifty years. And every single one of you that is against this, I either have done business with you or know you. So, Mr. Chairman, I am ready to make the motion to deny the application, PUD twenty-twenty- twenty-three dash zero-zero-zero-zero-nine, because it does not meet the criteria developed in our land development code or comprehensive plan, and take the recommendation of the Planning Commission to deny and our staff to deny.
A proper motion by Commissioner Pickens. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have proper second. Any further discussion on the motion at hand? Mr. Adams, Zach?
I'll say, I support the motion based on what's presented to us. If an applicant came forward that was willing to pave out to the next paved road, my mind may change on that. So, I just want to be clear on that. But yeah, in the current makeup, I was actually on that road this past weekend, just because I was in Crescent City for some other things, and I drove by, knowing it was on our agenda. I didn't think the road was that bad compared to, I guess, in West Putnam, we have a different view of a bad dirt road. District one just seems to get all theirs maintained better, and that's...
Boy, drop the mic on that one.
So, in its, in its current application, I don't support it. This is basically what I want to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So, we have proper motion, proper second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The ayes have it. This has been denied. Thank you. Mr. Zach, you have the next case on, no, 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 we're not going to... On Holly Irish.
Yes, sir. Michael Gazelle is going to come up and present this case for us.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Michael Graves, Planning and Development Services, and I'm here to talk about REZ twenty-three dash zero-zero-zero-zero-zero-one-one. The application is a zoning map amendment from agriculture to commercial neighborhood for the Blevins Family Trust. The location is at the intersection of two-oh-seven and East Lewisboro Road. The property is approximately two-point-zero-eight acres, and the future land use of commercial. Current zoner is, zoning is agriculture, and we are trying to amend this for the placement of a Dollar General store on location. The parcel is, itself is six-point-nine-one acres, and they are only attempting to rezone a portion of it, just enough space to put in the Dollar General, so that the rest is not considered speculative zoning. The parcel is located on a corridor where commercial development has occurred on lands that have maintained a commercial future land use classification, and the surrounding zoning designations are commercial and residential, as well as a bit of agriculture. Most of the, most of the neighborhooding lands are either vacant farmland or residential, as you can see in the zoning and aerial maps. And as you can see here on the future land use map, it is planned to be commercial in the future. The proposed rezoning, the current designation of agriculture does not allow for retail sales. Rezoning to commercial neighborhood would allow for general retail. The proposed rezoning is compatible with the surrounding uses and would be compatible with the future land use designation and the zoning designation with the surrounding areas. Staff finds that the proposal to rezone from agriculture to commercial one is consistent with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan and is allowed in the adopted future land use categories. It is not anticipated to adversely affect the orderly development of the adjacent or surrounding properties, as the property is subject to the development standards of the LDC, of the commercial one zoning district. Staff recommended approval to request the amended zoning map from agriculture to commercial one. On the January tenth, twenty-twenty-four, Putnam County Planning Commission recommended approval of the requested, of their request to amend the zoning map from agriculture to commercial one, as it is consistent with the goals and objectives of the Putnam County Comprehensive Plan. It is allowed in the adopted future land use categories and is anticipated to not adversely affect the orderly development of the neighborhood. Any questions?
Commissioners, any questions? Doesn't look like we have any right now. Thank you. Is the applicant here and would like to speak?
Good morning, Board. Holly Irish, one-four-four-nine Southwest Seventy-Fourth Drive, Gainesville, Florida, three-two-six-zero-seven. Thank you, Michael, for doing a great job for presenting this. I won't rehash all of the details that he did. I just want to say that we've worked with staff a lot on the layout of the site and making sure that we're following all land development regulations. We've also had meetings with FDOT about the access point. We have a traffic study that supports no turn lane improvements or anything like that required for this area. We are intending to improve and pave Lewisboro Road up to the property line of the commercial rezoning. For the remaining property to the north, that's agriculture, and the property line, and the property to the east, we are proposing a six-foot privacy fence. There's public water available, a forest main that is under construction right now on the opposite side of two-oh-seven. So, we'll be crossing two-oh-seven to connect to those public utility availables, or public utilities available, sorry. If there's anything else I can answer, I'd be happy to. If there's anything else I can answer, I'd be happy to.
I have a question.
Yes.
Because it came up in East Palaca the other day.
Yes, sir.
When you talk six-foot privacy fence, are you coming from the current grade or the improved grade?
The... Well, we have to match the current grade on the property line, which is typically where the fence is located. So just grading recommendations, we're tying into existing property grades at that location, so it would be at grade.
We have one the other day that built underground water storage, and the requirement was just on grade in that you could almost step over the fence.
Step over? That does happen sometimes.
It does happen, so it's something we're going to look at, but...
Absolutely. That would be great during the site planning process. Staff could take a look at and ensure that, you know, whatever the grade is, it's appropriate to actually provide some privacy there.
Good, thank you. Any further questions? All right, then we're going to open it up for public comment then.
Thank you.
All right, is there anybody here in the audience who want to speak in favor of this application? Anybody want to speak in opposition of this application? And no one's running up, so we're going to close our public portion of that. And Commissioners, deliberations? And what's your pleasure?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Go right ahead.
I'd like to move approval of rezoning, REZ 23-000011, for the amended zoning map from agriculture to commercial one neighborhood.
We have a proper motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Proper second. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. The ayes have it. Thank you. Okay. Next item is rezon, REZ 23-000012, Mark Spalding.
Once again, for the record, Michael Graves, Planning and Development Services. And as the Commissioner just said, this is REZ 23-000012. The application this time is a zoning map amendment from agriculture to commercial retail, C2, for the Mark Spalding Family Trust. This is two parcels located at 117 Reed Bell Street and 645 Old San Mateo Road. The properties being rezoned have a total acreage of approximately 9.02 acres, with a future land use of urban service and a current zoning of agriculture. This is also to amend the zoning map for a Dollar General store to be built on location. The two parcels, as mentioned before, are approximately 9.6 acres in size. They are... The supplied site plan shows that the development of the Dollar General is to be located on the southern parcel, which is parcel 391027000020000. The parcel is located in a portion of corridor where commercial development has occurred on lands that have maintained urban service future land use classification, and the surrounding zoning designations are commercial, residential, and a planned unit development, as well as a bit of agriculture. The surrounding future land uses are urban service and agriculture. Approximately a third of these lands appear vacant, with the rest being used for light residential or religious purposes. Here you can see the aerial map to help kind of give an idea of where the properties are. And here you can see the zoning, which more shows off the different surrounding area, as well as the future land use, where you can see that pretty much everything is urban service, with the agriculture being further away from the main road. The proposed rezoning, the current zoning designation of agriculture does not allow for general retail sales. Rezoning to commercial retail, C2 zoning designation would allow for general retail sales. The proposed rezoning is compatible with the future surrounding uses and with the future land use designation and zoning designation within the surrounding area. Staff finds that the proposal rezoning from agriculture to commercial two is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the adopted comprehensive plan, is allowed in the adopted future land use categories, is not anticipated to adversely affect the orderly development of the adjacent and surrounding properties, and the property is subject to the developmental standards of the land development code and meets the locational requirements for the commercial two zoning district provided in the LDC and comprehensive plan. As such, staff recommends approval of the request to amend the zoning map from agriculture to commercial two. On the January 10th, 2024, Putnam County Planning Commission meeting, they also recommended approval on their request to amend the zoning map from agriculture to commercial two.
Any questions? Mr. Adams-Zack, you have the floor.
Why do they need to go C2 for the same purpose that C1 applied in the prior applicant for the same use?
They do not, because C1 does allow for the development or general retail sales. It appears that C2 was chosen due to the existence of C2 zoning already in the area from the tabernacle that used to be San Mateo Seafood.
My concern always when we do these is when we go to the higher level, whether it's C3 or C2, or I like to keep it as close to the level that allows the use that is being asked for. And then if there's another use that comes about later, just because that opens you up that any use that's in C2 could be utilized at that particular property for perpetual, forever. I'd prefer to see this one come in at C1 because it provides the use case that they're asking for. Just my opinion.
Thank you, sir. But I kind of... I'm on the different opinion on that, if you don't mind. I think that C2 along that corridor, that is one of our business corridors, and a lot of different uses are going there. And so I don't have an issue, but I do appreciate the question, because I think it needed to be asked of why. But I think we need to be more consistent along that corridor and not have C2, C1, and a hodgepodge of different things, so...
If I may?
You may.
Staff would like to also point out that a small portion of one of the parcels is already C2, as it was zoned that way when the San Mateo Seafood was zoned commercial two. You can see that on your screens right now.
Correct. Thank you. Anybody, any other questions?
Yeah, I was going to say, isn't there a portion of that already C2? Would you clarify that? And the applicant, after the proposed project that he puts up, could do anything within C2, as long as it fits, and anything out of that, he would need a special use permit and would have to go through the ZBOA for approval. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
I just want to go on record and say that I do have my real estate license at the same office that Mr. Spalding does. However, I have nothing to personally gain and no personal interest in this property, and I've had no interaction with the applicant regarding this application.
Good deal. All right, thank you. Is there anybody in the audience that wants to speak against this? Anybody want to speak against? Come on up, please. Is the applicant here, number one? I should have asked that. Okay, hang on just a minute, sir. I need the applicant first, and then we'll go to...
Hello, Holly Irish again, 1449 Southwest 74th Drive, Gainesville, Florida 32607, also representing this property as well. Kind of the same thing. We went through a lot of due diligence and meetings with staff to come up with a plan that works and meets the land development code and regulations. We've met with FDOT. They are requiring some roadway improvements on US 17, so we'll be performing that with this site as well. There's forest main available for connection, potable water on Old San Mateo Road. Related to the zoning, that is something we're cognizant of and discussed with staff early. We didn't want to seem like we were trying to come in and, you know, get something greater than we really needed, but it was most consistent, and with a portion of the property being C2, it's kind of what made sense there. So that's kind of where we went with that. It did take consideration and, you know, careful discussion around that item, so... But any other questions you have, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions? All right, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll go to against. Please come up and state your name and address for the record, please. And you'll be... We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. Commissioners, my light is not working up here if you hit your button, so just flag me down if you need to speak.
Just for clarity, I'm not particularly against it. That's not what I'm here for. Just want to speak about it, okay?
State your name and...
I'm Edward Jones. I am the pastor of the church next door. It's going to be hard to keep anything at three minutes, but we do have the property next door. We share 585-plus foot boundary on their southern border, our northern border there. Our concern is, besides it's a regular church service that we have, we're Putnam County's headquarters for Trail Life Boys Program and American Heritage Girls Programs, which we just got. National Christian Scouting Program for kids age five to 18. And we have weekly meetings for those programs, little kids, big kids, you know. This time of the year, you know, it does get dark early, and we actually have the outdoor with every meeting, we have an outdoor portion, and so we're outside at night playing games, football and stuff. But we also do a lot of outdoor skills, you know, life skill type things. We do overnight camping. Sometimes we do complete weekend campouts there with the kids. Mr. Spalding's been a great neighbor. He's let us use his woods, you know, just going through there and let the kids, you know, learn about the woods and the plants and the trees and all that. It's been really that... So that's been helpful. Trail Life itself and American Heritage Girls have very stringent requirements in place for kids' safety. I mean, given all the stuff you see on the news going on, they looked at all the Boy Scouts, that's where the leaders originally came from, and everything that went wrong, they analyzed all the thousands of things, said, what can we do to make this right? And so one of the requirements is that during the program, they don't allow any contact with non-members or adults. In other words, we come there, and the parents can come there, their brothers and sisters can come, but they can't have any contact with the public. And so that's where I'm concerned, at how can we set this up so that won't be a problem, you know, with a business next door? So I was thinking that if, you know, if this gets approved, that what we would like to see is like a chain link fence, and maybe something planted along there, or a privacy fence, but I know with just the visual fence, like the wooden fences, if you... A few years down the road, those get broken and stuff, so that would be a concern. We just want to be able to keep our safety protocols in place so that we can guarantee the parents, you know, that we're taking care of the kids and the organizations that we're within the guidelines. And so I would just appreciate y'all, you know, the commissions joining with us and trying to keep the kids safe and, you know, stipulate some sort of a barrier, or the owners agree to that. I don't know what you had a plan to start with, but if we could like make something that's childproof and predator-proof, that's what we need. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your comments.
Thanks.
Yes, Mr. Adams-Zack?
Is that something you guys are amenable to? I mean, the last one, you said you were going to put up a six-foot fence.
Yes, so, I mean, in this particular case, the retail store is proposed on the southern end of the property. So the map that's up there, it's taking place on that very southern end, and there's no proposal for the remaining 5.68 acres at all right now for any kind of development. And that's just, you know, we're intending for that to remain wooded. I have no idea what would happen to the rest of it, but I would just say, like, I think it would be more appropriate to put that on a future development that would come in there, that would actually abut that property line. But I'm just wondering what you guys think about that. And I can... There's probably...
I'll say what I think about it.
Four hundred feet in between.
As the youth director at a different church, it is ultimately our church's responsibility to take care of our boundary and our fence and that stuff, understanding you want to be neighborly and have neighbors that do that, if they're doing something that may impact you. I don't think it's a requirement. I was just asking for purposes of, it sounds like you have a good relationship with the church, if you'd be amicable to it. We have put in place for our youth stuff similar things, but we have to maintain our own fences and our own safety protocol, our own cameras, our own... We have a whole team of people that's for security, so... And I would hope all churches are doing that throughout the community, just given the time that we live in, that, I guess I'm just saying this as a public service announcement more than anything, but hopefully you guys as neighbors can work out. I don't think it's something we should apply to you, and I don't know that we needed to in the other one either. You chose to offer that. But thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Chairman, may I address that, too?
That?
Commissioner Adams-Zack, I believe that the gentleman that just spoke was referring to the church property on the south side. Is that correct?
Yes.
And that south side, we would have then an incompatibility with adjacent zonings. So the buffer requirements of the land development code would come into play during site plan review. Now, there are several options. There's about five different options for a type of buffer that can be utilized. One of them is a six-foot wooden privacy fence. So it's typically up to the discretion of the developer which one they implement, as long as it satisfies that buffer. So we can't necessarily guarantee a fence, but we can guarantee some buffer separating the uses.
Yes, so given that on the south side, no separation, definitely certainly, we can take that into consideration and work with staff on that during the site planning portion of it.
I guess my question for staff then though is, since they're talking about doing it on the... I'm assuming you're on the side where the C2 already is? That's what you're saying?
We are on the opposite side, so we're coming in the southern side of the map that's on the screen right now.
Okay, so closer side to the church.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so there would be at least a vegetative... I was hoping you were going to say you were going on the other end, because then you'd have all that woods between you.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I can say, we would likely put in the privacy fence as part of that buffer. I just can't speak entirely for the developer right now, but that would be my recommendation to them as well.
Commissioners, any other questions? Okay, we're going to close the public part of our meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we will go into Commissioner deliberations. What's your pleasure, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we approve the rezoning of the REZ 23-000012. As it... The rezoning from Ag to C2 is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the adopted comprehensive plan, and is allowed in the adopted future land use category and meets the location requirements of the commercial retail C2 zoning district provided in the LDC and the comprehensive plan.
Second.
We have proper motion, we have proper second. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. The ayes have it.
Three to one. Three to one.
Oh, I'm sorry, three to one. Okay. So we are now going to take a three-minute break. Thank you. Our meeting reconvened. We're going to reconvene our Board of County Commission meeting and move down to our public comment on agenda items. Ashley, do we have any cards? This portion of the agenda is designed to allow the citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the board. It is not reasonable to expect that the board will engage in debate or deliberations about matters on which the board has received no prior information as part of the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Public comment cards are conveniently placed in the meeting room entrance and should be submitted prior to the meeting to Deputy Clerk Ashley, to my left, your right of the podium. So is there anybody who wants to speak on agenda items? Please make your way to, and seeing nobody running up, we will close that portion of our meeting, go to our consent agenda. Commissioner Adamsak, is there any items on the consent that you'd like to pull? Okay, Commissioner Pickens?
I have none.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
I have none.
And I have none. I do think that we are pulling item E. We're not ready for that today, so item E will be not involved in the consent agenda, and I have no items myself. So the chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of consent agenda items A, B, C. Oh, it's all messed up.
Everything except for E.
Everything except for E. Yeah, thank you.
We have a proper motion to approve the consent agenda without the item E in it. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a proper second. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. The ayes have it. Next is our new business, Parks and Recreation, tennis court lighting upgrades and corresponding budget. Julieanne, is that you?
Well, I told Kevin he could stick around and work one more day, but he didn't, so here we are. Yes, sir. Thank you, Chairman. Brought to you today was a recommendation that came from the Parks and Recs Committee, a former, now former, but a board member who has served with us. The recommendation was to upgrade the lights there at the basketball tennis court that is just south of the pickleball court. We did a lumen study, and the lighting schedule for recommendation for recreational basketball, the lumens were well below what standard is or what your goal is. And so we have looked into options, and the recommendation from the Rec Advisory Board is there before you.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, and this did, this was actually brought to our attention by a citizen who is actually now on the board. And, you know, we've done a lot of upgrades out to that particular park, and there were three options, and this was the option that the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee felt was the best fit, dollar-wise, and to get the required lighting that we're looking for. So it was unanimously recommended.
Good. All right. Where do we want to go with that now? It's your pleasure, board.
Do we need to make a motion to move it forward?
Okay, we have a proper motion to move this item forward and purchase.
This would come out of general fund?
Yes, sir.
Reserves?
Do we have a second?
A second.
Do we have any further comment or discussion on the motion at hand? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. The ayes have it. Next is our Parks and Recreation, Georgia's Lake Boat Ramp.
Yes, sir, Chairman. Thank you. Again, this came from your Fishing Fund Advisory Committee, who was brought an item to them by a citizen or group of citizens out in the Georgia's Lake area. The request at the Fishing Fund was a recommendation or request from the citizen in the area to entertain negotiations with the landowner for either a long-term lease and/or a purchase price on that Georgia's Lake boat ramp. The Fishing Fund unanimously consented to move it forward with recommendation in support to attempt one of those two mechanisms.
So to be clear, this is just to direct staff on entering more conversation on a long-term lease, or if the owner is willing to sell the property?
That's correct, yes, sir.
And we have, there's a new owner there. It's no longer a warehouser, is that correct? Is that transaction?
Oddly enough, it changed to a warehouser. So in theory, yes, it's new, but it's the same corporation and contact information, and it's just an annual lease.
Okay, yeah. Well, somebody in that area, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I apologize if I went out of order. I grew up playing in that lake at that very, very boat ramp, and we swam there. We took our kids fishing. We took our kids boating. So I know how important it is to the citizens in that community. So I would like to see us do something on a long-term basis, whether it's through a lease agreement or an actual acquisition. Of course, the best scenario, in my opinion, if we could afford it, would be an acquisition, but I don't know that, you know, if what they would entertain.
Yes, sir.
But that's where I'm at.
Is that a motion?
Well, I'd like to hear from other members of the board.
I'd prefer it to be an acquisition, too, if we're just talking about the slice that goes to the boat ramp and some parking, not, there's a bigger piece of property there, obviously. My question, I guess, for Rich would be, would we fall into the same, let's say we did a 20-year lease, and they transactioned the property to someone else, wouldn't we be under that same thing where they could just say that lease is no longer? And that's why I'm leaning more towards a purchase than, than a lease, because they could literally do a land swap and then have it be back to warehouser and just tell us we're out, kind of like how this really played out?
With a future lease, yes, that could be possible. I mean, right now, the lease that's before you, that's not the way it's written, but...
Yeah, the lease now is just...
Year to year.
Year to year, right? So that really doesn't give us any...
Gives you 90 days' notice, the way it's written.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, you done?
Yes, sir.
Done, Paul?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I have been in that area, and you have to remember also, there's a, I guess, a dry hydrant or, or access to water for the fire department out there, too. So it has a number of uses, so it's a pretty valuable asset to Putnam County. So, yeah, I agree, we'll either long-term lease if it will hold up, or see if they will sell it. Julieanne, has there been conversations in the past about a purchase?
Yes, sir, there has. They haven't ever come to fruition. The owner has never been interested in it, but we're happy to engage those conversations.
So we've already approved the lease, the current lease. This is just for the future?
Correct.
And you're looking for direction. Do we have to make a motion, or we just leave in support that they go after this?
Rich, would you like it in the form of a motion, or just a?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Okay, I make a motion that we allow staff to enter into discussions with the current owner for the Georgia's Lake boat ramp area. Can I get a second?
I'll second. I thought, I didn't know you were done with the motion.
You were going to do it.
Go right ahead.
Minister of Science is going to second it.
So just to clarify, we're, we're going to see, allow staff to enter into conversation about a long-term lease or a possible purchase?
Correct.
Okay, and we have a proper second. Any further discussion on the motion at hand? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. The ayes have it. Next is item Parks and Recreation, Pico Road Boat Ramp.
Boy, Parks and Rec was busy.
I know, they're busy today, aren't they? Julieanne, do you have that, too, since Kevin's no longer here, right?
Right. The Pico Boat Ramp in East Palatka was damaged in the last storm, and we do have an area of the dock that is no longer or is currently shut off. We, we blocked access to it as we worked with FEMA to determine potential outcomes. We do have, we had FEMA here, and we do have four proposals before you. One is to replace one portion of the dock. Second is to replace the north portion of the dock. The third option, we need to replace both of them. Those three options would be replacement of like value, so like stat, state before the storm arrived. And then there is a fourth proposal, which would be more of a mitigation strategy, a floating dock, for lack of better terms, that would allow the dock to rise and, and lower with the tide levels. We historically have seen flooding in Pico. We have high water levels there at Pico, which, which doesn't help us with that dock structure. FEMA will not contribute to anything that doesn't repair to pre-storm condition. So that fourth option on the table is for your consideration only to the extent that you understand FEMA doesn't have any involvement in that. FEMA did come down with their engineers, and they've only pre-authorized repairs up to the amount of a $10,000 roughly job, with that being 75-25 split. So the county would still be on the portion of that. That will not completely replace either portions of the dock to a pre-storm condition, certainly nothing on a mitigation strategy. That is only replacing the boards that are malfunctioning, so picking out a board here and there. It wouldn't do anything for the pylons or anything like that. Presented this information to the Fishing Fund at the February 7th meeting. The Fishing Fund had two recommendations that came from this discussion. One is they only want to make repairs up to the extent that FEMA will cover them. And at this time, that's a, we have a pre-authorized amount of $10,000. However, until the repairs are complete and FEMA validates, we're not exactly or 100% sure as to what FEMA will contribute. And then their second recommendation was to ask the board to seek engineering or design study consultant to look at options in that boat ramp area, to raise the parking area and the boat ramp launch to a higher surface level to combat the high tides there that we face at Pico Road. And staff is seeking direction.
Okay, any questions?
I have a question. When, when did FEMA do their assessment?
Just after that storm...
So it's been several years ago?
No, 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 after the most recent storm.
Oh, okay.
And within the last year.
After Nicole.
Nicole, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it just seems like a huge difference, but I understand, based on your explanation, a little bit better now. Thank you. Have we, one of the questions that's been asked is, have we, when we received our approximate numbers, we, we haven't sent this out for bid officially.
We haven't. We have had some conversations with FEMA about our very different project, cost projections. And their advice was that FEMA has advised that the possible final reimbursement could include up to either options one, two, or three, but their pre-authorized amount is only that $10,000.
Okay, I understand now. Thank you.
So the recommendation from the Fishing Fund was to spend $10,130 on repair. Was that what they recommended?
They did. The recommendation from Fishing Fund was not necessarily a dollar amount specific, but to only spend the dollars that FEMA had already promised, so the guaranteed dollars. We do not currently have a quote or a scope of work that would entail repairs for only the egregiously damaged boards.
Okay. And the other question I have, can we, can we do this engineering in-house as far as the, the parking area and the, is that something that we could do and look at? JR, I guess I'm looking at you and...
Could I preface that with a maybe? Because I think there's a lot of, lot of implications by raising that boat ramp, right? Where does that water go next?
Right.
And I don't know that we have the ability in-house to do the study of where that water goes to next, because I don't think we have all the data. I'm not saying we can't work on the project, but I'd have to look more at the scope before I would commit that we could absolutely 100% do it in-house.
When we talk, when you just mentioned talking about raising the boat ramp, I was understanding they just wanted to raise the parking area, because that's what was flooded most of the time, is the parking area. I don't know much about, can you raise the parking and not raise the boat ramp? I don't know that.
You could.
Okay.
It would just make for a very steep boat ramp.
Yeah, it would. You ever put a boat in in the Alcoa?
All the time.
Yeah. It's pretty steep down there, too, but I don't, I don't...
Very good point, good point.
I mean, where do we go from here, I guess? That's, do we...
Staff is looking for the board's direction. The Fishing Fund has given a recommendation, and, and at this point, staff is looking for a direction as to what the board would like to engage or...
I would have to have more information regarding what the balance is in the Fishing Fund and what we have obligated already, because I know that we've had discussions about Georgia's, I mean, Georgia's Lake or Lake George. Which one is it?
Georgia's Lake.
George.
Lake George and, and...
Not Lake George, Georgia's Lake.
Georgia's Lake, always getting confused, sorry.
And the new boat ramp?
And a new boat ramp that we discussed about Dunn's Creek, although we haven't made a, a...
Georgetown, too.
In Georgetown, right. So we've got some obligations, or at least some things out there that we need to have. It's hard for me to say a certain number when I don't know that that number's available specifically, because we have some other things that we've discussed in the past about doing. So that's where I'm at. And $10,000, y'all, we couldn't even put a swing and barden for $10,000. So I don't know how we're going to fix anything at a boat ramp for $10,000. Listen, I'm glad that FEMA... ...to do that, obviously, because that's an easy, easy one, but I don't know, it's hard for me to say anything further beyond that as far as number-wise.
I understand.
Yeah, Mr. Adamsak, hang on just a minute. The lights are working again.
So I, I do like that commentary from Commissioner Wilkinson, but I think we have a prior, we have to prioritize maintaining what already exists over building new things as well. So, I mean, we have an existing asset that already is broken. So I, I do think, to me, I would prioritize one of these proposals over building that new boat ramp in the future, and hopefully we can do all of it. But to let something deteriorate and be broken and then go build something new somewhere else doesn't make sense. I can't get that through my head. It doesn't process properly for me. So I think we should take care of this asset first and then do those other ones later. In my, that's just my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Adamsak. Any further? Mr. Pickens?
So this, this is the concurrent condition of these docks now?
Yes, sir. The south dock is barricaded or blocked because it is not suitable for pedestrian usage or...
Are these things something that can be repaired in-house, or you would hire this out?
Yeah, depending on the direction. I mean, we have staff that can screw and unscrew boards. I mean, we could, we could do that. I mean, but it's just, it gets back to the priority, right? We have six people in a division that maintain every building in the county.
Right.
As far as doing repair work, and then you're going to say, well, we need you to go put a dock, you know, start rebuilding docks. So we... So we got to get to a point where we got to, like I think Commissioner Adams, we got to prioritize what we want to do. Do we want to use in-house staff to do this? Or do we want them to go fix a bathroom at the courthouse or whatever else is pressing that day? So we can absolutely do it. I mean, that, that's, answer to that question is yes, we can, but I don't know that we have enough time in a day to get all the work orders completed with that division and go repair a dock.
Okay, so what I see then maybe possibly is we need to get a hard number on what it would cost to replace the boards one by one.
Right.
That's a hard number. And then we need to see if allowed, if we could re-engineer that parking area, if, if we're allowed to do that, because that could be a minimal number or that could be a very large number. And we don't know that yet. So we're pointing at our engineer.
Yeah, you need to get it back where it's usable.
Right.
Because it's been flooding for the seven years I've been a commissioner. You know, so people have, have learned to deal with that. But if you can't walk out there on the, on the deck, you know, access your boat, that's another, that's another issue there.
Yeah. And I do agree with Commissioner Adams. My point was just it's hard for us to make a decision when we don't know what funds are available specifically and what, what we have specifically already obligated.
Yes, sir, Mr. Grind.
If you would allow it, Mr. Chairman, would you allow Mr. Knowles to come up and give a brief update on the 404 permitting process through, for building docks, boat ramps and all that stuff? I think it may help some decision-making.
Sure. Mr. Knowles, come up.
For the record, Scott Knowles, County Engineer. Recently, there have been changes in the statewide permitting for the Army Corps of Engineers 404 permits. It was under the control of DEP up until recently. Now it seems to be in limbo. And so permitting with a 404 nationwide permit, which would be required if we touch any portion of the ramp. If we're just doing the parking lot, we can probably get away without doing that as long as we're not impacting any wetlands or any water of the state. However, these permits take a long time as a, just a, just a normal measure, usually about a year to 18 months. Now, I can't even give you an idea of what a timeline would be because it's kind of in that limbo area. I haven't heard any news on how Army Corps is handling that or if DEP is going to take that back yet. So that's just something to keep in mind, that the design may not be the problem, the permitting may be the issue in this case, that it just may take a long time, 18 to 24 months, maybe.
Do you have to have a permit to just replace the woods that have already been pulled up?
Not to do maintenance. We don't have to have a permit to do maintenance. But if we have to remove a pile, then yes, we would have to have a permit for that.
Now, you said if we don't touch the boat ramp and just do the parking, do we have to have a permit for that?
If we're just doing the, if we're doing the parking area, if we're replacing in-kind on impervious area, we're not increasing the impervious area and we're not encroaching into a wetland, we probably won't have to deal with the 404 permitting. We may want to go to the Water Management District just to make sure that they're aware of what's going on, but the permitting with that should be fairly easy.
Have you been over there when the water covers the?
That, that's the boat ramp that I use regularly, so I'm familiar with it.
So I guess my question, and again, we would have to raise that parking area quite a bit, right?
About 18 inches would be my, the minimum, I would think.
And feather it back to a, I mean, I don't know.
Either feather it back or put in piles to avoid, at least along the waterway area, to avoid further encroachment into the waterway or into the wetlands.
So what would that do to the boat ramp itself? So you'd come out of there at a, at a steeper angle and then you'd go park at a?
We could, we could probably extend the boat ramp at the same, the same angle that it is. It would just mean that it's sticking further out, so to speak, into the parking area.
But if we didn't want to touch the boat ramp?
That would, that would be the way to do it, is avoiding the boat ramp. If we're coming in steeper, if we're trying to keep the, the peak of the boat ramp at the same location, that means replacing the boat ramp, increasing the slope. I don't want to do that.
I don't want to do that, okay. All right. Mr. Adams, you had a question?
Yeah. It's not really a question, but I, I kinda wanna focus on fixing the ramp that's there and this other project seems like it's almost like a separate project. I mean, it's not even, to me, it's not even the same resources that would repair the dock and would redo the grading of the, the parking lot. So I'd like to keep them separate if that's possible, just, I mean, I'd like, the conversation's great and that, that information is very helpful. I just don't, I think staff's asked us to focus on what are we gonna do with this dock? There's been a lot of complaints I've gotten about the dock, about the fact that it's closed, that, you know, we've talked about it before, we're always, we were deciding what's going on with FEMA on it. Now that we kinda have a direction from them, I'm, I'm kinda leaning towards proposal one, to be quite honest with you, and just get it back up and running the way it was and then, so I'm, I'm prepared to make a motion to support proposal one.
I have one question.
Yeah, I have a question, too. If, if we go to proposal one and the last line said the replacement will be the same footprint as the previous dock, only slightly wider, your comments was if we put another pile in there to make it?
If we get into the point of where we have to remove piles and replace them, then we will have to deal with permitting.
But if we go wider, we're going, it only stands to reason, we're gonna, we might have to put a pile in it.
We, if we go wider, yes. And I think the, I think that widening is probably talking about that little finger pier that's used as a breakwater on the south side of the ramp. And if we have, if, if you're going to widen that, yes, absolutely, you'd have to put in more piles and that would require permitting.
Then the proposal that's here does say that. It says to construct new, it does talk about piles and making it wider.
Right.
And also raising it two to three feet.
So it might be the better bang for the buck right now is to just replace the boards that are currently bad and try to get it back operational and see if we can find a local contractor or a local civic group or a local group of concerned citizens that love Pico Road, or I don't know the answer there.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, would it be amenable to just have us reach out over the next two weeks before your next commission meeting and get a price on just replacing the boards on the deck? But I would, I would just ask, do you want to do all of the boards and then just replace what and I can bring you back two different options?
I think that's fine.
Yeah, I agree with that. So they can get it usable. The ramp itself is fine, right? You can still use the ramp.
The ramp is in, in good condition. I mean, the top of the ramp has some cracking, but it still has some life in it. So really, there's no need to replace the ramp. Really, the, the biggest issue is the dock and maybe the parking and the encroachment of the water, of course.
Okay, good. All right, so consensus is to bring back a proposal of just replacing the boards on the dock as they are right now. And then we'll look at the parking lot down the road sometime at a different, okay. I'm go, do you need a motion?
I think Mr. Adams, Commissioner Adams was about to make a.
Okay, so the motion, that's a motion as stated then. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second?
We have discussion.
Yes, we can have discussion, Commissioner Wilkinson.
No, I think Ashley has discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's the speaker.
Mr. Tim Hoteling, please, I sorry about that.
Sorry, Tim Hoteling, San Mateo, 105 Riverside Way. I didn't want to interrupt, but in the past, I brought to y'all and in particular Sam Sullivan, your grants man, information that there's recurring major money available for dock ramps. And the problem that we had with Blue Ways and Trails is you couldn't buy the land to put in a fishing access. But if you already have it, there's money available. And I would encourage you to, while you're gathering information, to include him and that information.
Thank you, Tim, appreciate that. Okay, any further discussion? We have motion, we have a second. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, the ayes have it. Next is our Code's Enforcement. Thomas, are you, yep? And let's make Commissioner Turner proud of us today. Go right ahead, sir.
Code case is 2010-891, address is 143 Highliner Road. Property owner's name is Mad Assets LLC. The violation was unsafe structure and care premises. Original fine amount was $25,596.15. Total cost of enforcement action was $5,036. Property owners recently purchased the property. It's now compliant, requesting a fine reduction. If the board approves, we recommend the reduced fine to be paid within 90 days.
Is the applicant in the room? Seeing not. Board, what's your pleasure?
I made the motion that we reduce the fine for code case 20, 2010-00891 to $5,036 that's paid within 90 days.
Proper motion? Do we have improper second? Any further comment on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, the ayes have it. Thomas, next case?
Code case is 2014-371. The address is 403 East Lake Street. Property owner's name is Tyrone Johnson. Violation was unsafe structure. Original fine amount was $14,472. Total cost of enforcement action was $2,140. Property owners made the property compliant, requesting a fine reduction. If the board approves, we recommend the reduced fine to be paid within 90 days.
Is the applicant in the room? Seeing he's not. Board, what's your pleasure?
I make a motion that we approve ca- code case 2014-00371, fine reduction to 2140. $2,140 to be paid within 90 days.
Second.
A proper motion, proper second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Thank you, Thomas.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Our goal for those of you who are listening and in the audience is to get these properties cleaned up and back on the tax roll, and that's what we're doing today. Commissioners, I'll start with Commissioner Adams. Do you have any appointments to make? Commissioner Pickens?
I have none.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
I have none.
And I have none. Next item on our agenda is public comment on miscellaneous items. Again, this portion of the agenda is designed for, to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the board. It's not reasonable to expect the board will engage in debate or deliberations on matters that we have no prior information on. Please try to limit your comments to three minutes. Public comment cards are in the back of the room. You do not have to have a card to speak, but you can. And you'll give them to Ms. Ashley to my left, your right. Our first speaker is Mr. Leo Murray Memes.
Murray Memes, 143 Kitty Avenue, Interlock in Florida. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. What I'd like to address is road improvements. We live in the 100 block of Kitty Avenue. That's paved, off Cordell is paved and in the south part of Kitty is a dirt road. Our concern for years is in maintenance of the road, it's in terrible condition. And some of the attempts to improve it have actually had the opposite effect. There are 24 residences on a stretch, the stretch that we live on, within the three-quarter mile area. It's on Jewel Lake. Larry knows what I'm talking about because he lives over on one of the lakes off Jewel. My concern, other than the maintenance of our road, which really, it needs some attention. Need to go out and take a, doesn't matter whether it's wet or dry or just been graded or whatever. I mean, after it's just been graded, you can drive down it and still feel the bumps and everything that rattle your car. My concern, second concern is on the northeast side of Kitty. There are seven streets that are in the process of being paved, starting with Dottie right next door to, to you. Dottie Stevens, Annette, Marion Jewel.
Maltese?
Maltese. There, there's seven of them. I know that all of this is to be, before any road improvements are made of this magnitude, it has to be initiated by the property owners that are affected. I have a question. Was this initiated by the property owners?
That's not correct. That wasn't correct.
What is not correct?
And I'll go ahead and answer the question, because I kinda anticipated this to come up.
Okay.
And I'm really glad you did come up. You are in the MSBU, the Interlock and Lake Estates MSBU. Right behind you, Mr. Tony Paparoski is sitting back there. He's our MSBU coordinator for your area. And I've heard your complaints. These particular roads that are being paved right now are, were paid for by the people back in 1999 and they still live on a dirt road. They still live on, so imagine you paying your garbage fee for 20 years and no one ever picked your garbage up. Now, they had, they got close enough to their house, but that didn't count. And the county sent the county road graders in there to grade those roads. So they weren't part of the MSBU. They were taken out. So when you come around by my house, you're riding on a road that 100% of that road was paid for by the citizens of Putnam County, not the general fund.
Okay, and you're saying this was?
These people paid an assessment and received barely the benefit of it. They got close to their home, but they did not get a paved road at their home. And this is to take care of that promise and to get the county road graders out of that area. Because then, once they're gone out of there, everything that's left out there is an MSBU roads.
So these, this has been previously paid for by the people that have access to the areas that are being paved?
They paid a fee and they didn't get the road. So we fought very hard to get that done and no, they're not, this is not coming out of money they spent. This is coming out of our Better Place Plan money right now.
Okay. What is the situation as far as the 100 block of Kitty? Can you tell me if there's anything planned for it or?
You do have, well, I don't know about that. We have commit, we have groups out there, Violet Lake is just looking at a paving MSBU like we did over in my area, where we went from dirt to paved and we paid 100% of that. They're looking at that now, but there is no plans right now. I think I have 350 miles of dirt roads in my district or approximately that. And I get about a mile a year. So we're trying to spread it out. Next, we're gonna go to Melrose, then we're gonna go to Floor Home, then we'll be back over in this area. We are trying our best to get roads done around there, but the roads we're trying to do are the ones we're trying to move people out of. So we are. Now, I would do want to interrupt you for a minute. There is a, there is a Citizens Committee that meets every month at the community center and we'd love to have you be a part of that Citizens Committee that makes advisement. And Tony is right behind you, if you want to see him. He heads that up for us, okay?
Now, what about the new pavement that goes around Lake Ida? Was that paid for by?
Better Place Plan money.
Better Place?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so that means that the people that live there initiated?
No.
No?
No.
How was it initiated?
These roads get graded based on the work that needs to be done. And that was a really bad road, okay? So we tried to move people out of that area back to the main road, which was an MSTU road, that years and years ago, 40, 50, well, actually 60 years ago, that road was put in by everybody taxing themselves on Ad Valorm to go all the way back to the backside of the estates from Sun Avenue.
So the, and that was because of the condition of the road, right? You're saying that that was done because of the?
Well, partly condition, partly moving the many people out that we can move out, the masses. We try to look at that. We try to look at problems that we can avoid. Right now, we're looking at Melrose, an area that flooded. We had to pump water out of the road during Hurricane Matthew. I mean, pumped for, for days. So we, we look at different situations of what the area needs.
Now, have you, within recent time, have you been down that south end of Kitty?
I went down there the other day to look at that, I have.
And what would you say is the condition of the road?
It's a lot better than a lot of roads out there are. I mean, if you haven't been in West Putnam MSBU, I mean, it's across the street at 350. I think we need to, I probably need to. I think we need to, I probably need to end the debate, though. It's just an opportunity for.
That's fine.
Because there are other people that want to speak, but Mr. Adamsack has a comment.
Yeah, I just want to make, in general, so we do have a ranking system for the roads that we get from public works when we're deciding what to go from dirt to pave, and then there's also requests that we get as commissioners, and each of us do our own district, then we propose what we're going to do, based on the fact, kind of like you're saying, that it's like a dead-end area that we're driving a greater three miles to go service, a quarter mile. Like, one of the roads that was in my last year's dirt to pave was Cable Tower Road, which was a little dead-end part that wasn't paved when they paved the other part, and we were basically moving equipment every month to go pave this little tiny piece of road. Did that rank high on my scale? No, but does that save us money and not motivate them, not moving equipment to go do that piece of, that little piece of road? Yeah. So I did take a little bit of my money and went to, and I got criticism for it from people, and when I explained it to them, they were like, okay, that kind of makes sense. The rest of it is based on fire service and making sure that we have pathways to get from A to B, and there's a priority list that, based on emergency response, the school board, all the other inputs that come from them, that we get a ranking, and we try to, I try, I can't speak for the commissioners, but I try to take that ranking and go in order and get as much done as I possibly can with, like you said, the one to two miles that we get a year to pave based on the amount of money that comes in from Better Place Plan. So there is a process that I think we all follow. I don't know what each individual commissioner does specifically, but there is a process. There's a thought process to it. Obviously, the details of exactly what each commissioner does for theirs would be, probably is a little bit different, because we don't talk to each other about it. That's one area that we, really doesn't come up in the board, because we each kind of do our own district, so we don't really have a lot of debate. We trust each other that they made the right decision for their district. So I just want to give you a little background. There's more to it than just like, let's do road A, B, or C. It's, at least for me. Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Adamsack. There is a road in his area that we just approved, went a little further than what was proposed to go, but if we didn't go another three-tenths of a mile, we would blow out the road every time it rained again. So you have to look at all those things. Mr. Max Mims, you're next.
Max Mims, 145 Kitty Avenue, Interlochen. I'm going to, let me cut my comment, because I have determined from the conversation that this is not an issue for the county commissioners. This is an issue for the road committee. I've had dialogue with Larry since early 2014. We've discussed it many, many times. On one of my conversations with him, he suggested that I get on the road committee. The reason I refused to do that is I felt like that I would simply be deflecting rather than having any authority or any input in what was going on. But I appreciate, I appreciate the time. I'm sorry that this is not a, an item for the county commissioners to take action on. I feel like we need action. There's been very little, if any, action on it, and as I say, Larry and I began dialogue on this in 2014. He knows how I feel about it, but we have been neglected.
Well, I would disagree, because honestly, I was the landowner president out there before the MSBU's, and every Saturday, we drug the road with bed springs and stuff just to get the bumps off. Now, your roads are being done once a month. If we went back to the county, you wouldn't see a grader out there probably for six, eight weeks if we could even afford to do it. So I don't think you're being neglected, but if you feel like you are, please attend the citizens' meeting. Tony wants the input back there. He's doing a great job with these MSBU's. But I will voice the words of former Commissioner Kevin Durser. There is no good dirt road, period, and it's just as good the day you grade it, the moment you grade it. I think they smell, the foilers smell it, and they come tearing it up, or the big trucks do, and you're, we're right back to where we were, or the rains come, or no rains come. Again, there is no good dirt road. But thank you. Is there any more public comment on miscellaneous items? And seeing none, we're going to go to Clerk of the Court, Mr. Matt Reynolds.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. I have nothing. Thank you.
You have nothing?
I have nothing for you guys. Thank you.
All right, sir, thank you. Mr. Rich Commando?
Nothing else. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Terry Suggs, our county administrator.
No, sir, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Starting to my left, Commissioner Pickens. Do you have any commissioner comments?
Yeah, just a few. As you see the card that Dana Jones from the chamber handed out, as Commissioner Adamsack says, and Commissioner Harvey, all of us, is you're looking for something to do in Putnam County. There's something happening, you know, each and every weekend, and on the bottom one, it is the St. John's River Catfish Festival. We are going to bring, the Rotary Club is going to bring that back. It'll just be a one-day festival, just April 6th, from 10:00 to 4:00, but it'll have all the same food items that we have offered over the years, and it'll be the 42nd Catfish Festival. It's hard to believe. This weekend, the Downtown Association, along with the City of Crescent City, held their monthly farmers market, and it was very well attended. They've added a car show, so they had about ten or fifteen cars there, fifteen or twenty booths for either food products or items for sale, and also in Eagle Lions Park, the Concerned Citizens of Crescent City held their second annual Soul Food Festival, and it doubled in size in one year. And so they had about ten food trucks or booths, and about twenty-five or thirty vendors, so it looks like that event is gaining some traction, and it was very well attended. And also, the Concerned Citizens have been very busy. They had a dinner last Thursday night that I attended, and it honored the African-American veterans from Putnam County, and we probably had seventy-five people there. They honored about twenty, twenty-five veterans for their service. The oldest one was in his nineties, and was the honorable. One of them was Harry Banks, the City of Commissioner for forty years, and I think he's in his eighties, but it was a really well-done event, and just appreciate being part of that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Adamsack?
I got to both of those events late, but I will say I had some fantastic food at the Soul Food Event. I had some jerk chicken that was great, and unfortunately, I didn't get to the, cross the street quick enough, but they were closing up when I got over there, but both pretty cool events. On the MSBU thing, too, I just want to add to that, is the citizens' meetings, when citizens come, are very productive. I've attended them when I knew citizens were going to be there. Unfortunately, like, my one that's out in West Putnam, no one comes to it, so, and that's not yours, it's a separate one, but the other one is very active that I have. I only have two, and that one is very active, and they, they come to decisions as a group, and they do prioritize for Tony and the team what they want done, so your voice is very important to that committee. So I know you kind of said you were apprehensive about it. The bottom line is, if you show up, you're going to be one of the few people making decisions. I know that's a bad way to think about it, but that's the fact of what kind of goes on, is we don't know, or Tony doesn't really know unless you talk to him and come to those meetings what the priorities are, and you can help prioritize what that board does by going to those meetings. So I highly recommend it. I know that people that came to my one in West Putnam for a while, and then working with, with JR, I'm actually paving some of my one MSBU, because it made absolute sense to not continue to maintain a small portion because of the way that it literally washes out, where you could stand in a ditch in the middle of the road every time it rains, and it was up to my waist, and you can't cross that, so you had to go right and go around the community every time. So that is a possibility as well, but it's not our norm without it ranking high on that list, right? That you're still scored. All the MSBU roads are scored, and most of them don't score super high, because most of them aren't crossroads and different things. But just that your input there is very valuable, is all I'm telling you. It's not that we don't pay attention to MSBU meetings. I know Larry's been to some. I've been to some. It's, that, that's where, that is where the rubber meets the road, but we are paying attention to that as well. I just want to make sure you understand that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilkinson.
Thank you. I have a question for staff. How long will it take? I know Commissioner Turner requested the core borings for the animal control site. How long does that, do we anticipate getting an answer?
The PO's done. We've contacted Universal Engineering. They were putting us on their schedule. I'd like to say that's probably in the next two weeks, because we have not seen a large delay. We had some core borings done not long back, and we were done within about two weeks, but I can absolutely get you an answer on the exact day, now that we've got the PO to them and it's scheduled.
Okay. It was just disappointing to see that the newspaper acted like we were going to be six months, a year out, or something on, like, that we really pushed it back when we're doing our due diligence, so I was just disappointed in that, so I'm just going to say that. Anyway, I also wanted to, to mention that on March, this weekend coming up, we're going to have the 75th Annual Florida Azalea Festival downtown, vendors, music parade, car show, beauty pageant, and of course, hopefully, the azaleas will be in bloom, so y'all come down to downtown Palaca this weekend, and I want to thank everybody who's volunteering for that. I know a few of my friends personally, and I'm going to try to spend a few hours volunteering myself, and it takes a lot of community members to get these kind of events going, and I just want to give them a shout out and say thank you for all your hard work. That's all I have.
Thank you. And my comments will be brief. It's always good when government's closest to the people, so if you have input to give us, we're always looking forward to that, and these citizens' committee on the MSBU roads are very important. I know, I want to thank each and every one of you that attended the workshop that we had. I thought it was very productive. I thought we got a lot done with FDOT, and I think we're going to be seeing some wonderful things that staff is going to be bringing us soon about our buildings and what we can do, and it's just exciting to move Putnam County forward and promote Putnam County, and I will tell you, again, if you do not have that app on your phone, it is an award-winning app, and it is phenomenal, and I will tell you that it's great to see, I can ima, cannot imagine why people sit at home and go, Putnam County needs to do more. There is so much to do that you, you don't have time to get it all done, but we enjoy our outdoors, we enjoy our areas, and we appreciate that, and I want to give a shout out to staff for being so hospitable to our meeting we had the other day and the things we're going to be doing in the future. So is there anything else for the good of the order? This meeting's adjourned.[1781.54]